The board is returning to open session. We will begin with item C1, and that is the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have Spanish translation available.
Mi nombre es Esperanza Villegas, y esta tarde estoy aquí para traducir. Si alguno de ustedes necesita ayuda, me puede encontrar en la parte trasera de esta sala.
Thank you. And we have headsets available for the hearing impaired. If you do need a headset, you can notify one of the staff members at the back of the room. Announcement of closed session action, item C2. There is no closed session action to announce. We are on to item C3, public comment.
One question, Madam Chair. Is the 10-minute rule in effect for cumulative speakers?
Yes.
Okay. What that means is that any particular speaker is entitled to 10 minutes total on all the items. So if somebody wants to speak on multiple items, they need to combine their remarks to a cumulative 10 minutes.
So is there any public comments?
Yes, we have, under public input, and I presume you're talking about C3 with something not on the agenda, we have Joan Esposito.
I don't need notes for this one. You know, as we just said, the pledge allegiance to the flag, it was really wonderful to say because I became a citizen about seven years ago. I am 67 now. I came to this country when I was 21, and I could not pass the citizens test. I could not go and study for it because I couldn't read. And I started to learn how to read when I was 44. And it was a wonderful experience to me to become a citizen and pass that test. The only word I didn't spell right in the test was senator. I don't know why. But it's also nice to be able to tell people what you have and why you couldn't read. I'm very open about this. I've gone national with it. I've testified in the Senate with this, my conditions. But the children we're speaking about today will never get to where I am today. I had a husband who supported me. I had a husband who took me back to City College. I had a husband who helped me, helped me with my homework. I'm talking about the boys in this community. They don't have husbands to take them back to school, to City College. They don't have husbands to support them. They have to go out and make a living. When I was divorced, when I got a divorce and I was homeless, often after seven years, I moved from Beverly Hills. I had a 10,000-square-foot home in Montecito. I couldn't read and write. I lived with a very abusive husband, and he took everything. I'm not saying, "Don't feel sorry for me because it was the path that God put me on; otherwise I wouldn't be here today." I lost everything I had. And, you know, I cleaned hotel rooms out in Santa Barbara. I know what these children are going through. I know where they're going to go. Sometimes I come in front of you, and I may sound like I'm yelling and screaming at you, but none of you have walked in my footsteps. None of you have walked in the footsteps of these children. And I beg you, please, find out what's going on in your schools. When they're going into the community, these boys don't, they don't have anyone to support them. They're supposed to support families on their own. And I can't tell you how many of my clients, the boys, have children, and girls who have children. They can't read and write. They'll never be able to make a living. They'll never be able to afford insurance, or a car, or even food. They have to go on welfare. This is what we're talking about, not the politics that's going, that's been going on in this room, in this room, for 20 years since I've been coming. I can read your presentations that I gave 20 years ago in this district.
Twenty seconds.
And it was the same thing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yolanda Menares on public comment. That's on, speaking on something not on the agenda? Are you speaking on something not on the agenda?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi to everyone, and I'm very happy to be here. And I have five children. The three first ones are very successful, but the two youngest ones, those that I have learning disabilities, and I've been fighting for help since six years ago, six years ago. And now they are adults, 20 and 22. They're not right and read because they never got the help that they need. And I just want to see those change, especially for our future, for, even though our present, because now they are adults. And for me, it's very stressful as a mother when I see another kids in the same position. Even though Mrs. Joan Esposito has been helping me, I never got the help that I need. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Renard on C3, something not on the agenda?
I see you're quite concerned whether things are not on the agenda, Mr. Heron. I don't know where you come up with this 10-minute limit on public comment. On the agenda thing, it says 20 minutes. So if the board has secretly come to some new rule without doing it in an open session, you violated the Brown Act again.
The 20 minutes has to do with all public comment. The 10 minutes is per individual.
Right. It doesn't say that on here, is what I'm saying. So when did you come up with it?
Ms. Renard, it says, "When a speaker wishes to comment on multiple items, his or her time may be limited so as not to interfere with the timely completion of the board's business."
Where does it say the 10 minutes, is what I'm asking?
Actually, it can be at our discretion, so if we would like to shorten it if time's running.
So you guys made an agreement at somewhere that Mr. Heron was referring to, and you nodded yes.
It's been that way at several sessions over the past, since I've been on the board in six months.
All right. Well, I'll get on with the rest of the problems with the way that you're running the meetings, and Mr. Heron, with your attitude.
Pardon?
Why have you, has this board further limited public comment by not letting the public comment on conference items and other items on the agenda that are not on the action agenda except at public comment? They can't talk about matters that are not on the agenda and talk about matters that are on the agenda in under three minutes, like you limit them to. Considering everything that's going on with this district and this damning FICMAT report, how dare you further limit public comment and seem to just love it and really stick to it? And you, Ms. Parker, you just seem to love it. You know, why did you people become board members just to limit public comment when kids' lives are being destroyed? You've got a FICMAT report from a FICMAT agency that hardly ever gives out reports like this, but it was so bad, even they came out with a report that was, you know, talking about the worst they've ever seen in the state. But still, now you guys are trying to limit public comment on it and seem to be enjoying it. Why did you become board members? Why? And the way you treat Dr. Noel, the one person who's actually trying to help the kids here, you treat him so badly. You know, this man has had, I believe that you've caused this, him medical problems and stress. You know, I think he has a claim against you, the way you treat him so disrespectfully. Shame on you people. And this bridge program, this ridiculous, illegal bridge program that we told you explicitly, the illegal aspects of the parent letter that you're trying to send out, you don't even bother to discuss the issues before you all, except for Dr. Noel, vote for it. You really don't care. You really don't care. Why did you become board members? You should be ashamed of yourselves. I assume you're parents, too. How can you do this as parents to these children? How can you act like this?
Thank you, Mrs. Renard.
Oh, you're welcome.
You know.
Mr. Heron.
Well.
No.
No.
With that, we will move on to the action agenda. And the first item is D1, approval of employment contracts for interim special education administrators, Dr. Allen Hilton and Dr. Carol Miller. And Ms. Swawski will introduce this.
Okay. Thank you. As the agenda item, the memo notes, we are diligently recruiting and trying to hire our new leadership team for special ed. And in the meantime, we desperately need some interim leadership. Dr. Allen Hilton has been working in the district as an interim director, and we'd like to bring him back as an administrator, simply, it's for two months, limited times, 24 days, actually, tying up administrative duties, basically finalizing those cases that are essentially resolved. And then some staffing and department organization, things to just get the school year started. Dr. Carol Miller, who is in the room also, is coming to us for six, up to six months, or 66 days, to really work on getting the district back in shape, working with, hopefully, new, new leadership that gets in place. I just wanted to say that you can see her extensive resume. She has done several special education studies on issues that are very relevant to our district. I'm not going to read, we have pages and pages of checks on resource, people that are her resources and references, excuse me. And in particular, we checked a lot with staff that had worked with her, as well as parents. And all of those were extremely positive, being, common things were that she's a very people person, a problem solver, the most knowledgeable person in special ed I've ever known. She really gets it. She's amazing with parents. She put out a lot of fires as soon as the smoke started, and I can go on and on. But I'll stop there, and we're asking for approval for the contracts.
All right. I believe we have a number of public comments on this item. Yes, Mr. Heron?
We have nine.
Would board members like to hear from the public? And I'm assuming that we have had.
Yes.
We, yes, we know that, but I meant first, before public, before board member discussion. But I think my question is, I want to be sure that there are no speakers that are going to repeat themselves on this. Mr. Heron's going to take over the meeting briefly, because I need to step out, but I will be back in in a moment. And we will close D1 to public comment, and we can go ahead and get started. I apologize for the brief interruption.
Procedure question, Madam President.
Yes.
As you know, I have to leave at 5:00.
Yes.
And I'd like to be here to be able to vote. And yet, at the same time, I would like to hear all public comments, and I don't know how that's going to work out.
Well, I don't know, with the number of speakers that we have, that it's just, it's not going to be possible. I actually, it's probably better, at this point, that I step out also, because I have a commitment, which is trying to get delayed at 5:00 as well. But with that, it would leave us with an even number of board members, and it's probably better to have an odd number of board members for the vote. So I will go ahead and recuse myself for the rest of the meeting. And Dr. Noel, you, obviously, I know, when you need to go, you need to go, and I hope the public understands that.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Our first speaker is, does not have a name on the speaker sheet, but it's identified as Rosario Drive, and from a teacher's perspective.
Did you put my name on there?
I'm sorry.
And each speaker will have two minutes.
Okay, yeah, we'll speak quickly. We all have agreed we'll speak quickly. My name is Marilyn Lauer, and I'm a teacher, a special ed teacher in the district. Understanding that the district is doing due diligence in recruiting new leadership for the special education department, I just wanted to make a few comments from a special education teacher's perspective. I have had two involuntary transfers in these last two years, and, and the impact that the instability in the district has, this impact has directly affected me, which is probably why I keep up with the board meeting agendas on the website and pay attention and attend. I am diligent myself, and apprising myself of the district's actions. Many of my colleagues with whom I speak regularly either have not been impacted in such a direct way, or as to take a more active and visible role in addressing the changes or the lack thereof within our department. And it was too short of a notice for me to notify other teachers to attend this meeting, but I think that they would have, or might have. It concerns me that teachers weren't notified, perhaps through an email or a phone call, that a meeting that might directly affect their jobs in the fall was, was happening. And many special ed teachers I've spoken with share my feelings that one impact, that the impact of having or not having an interim director during the recruiting and hiring period is basically null. For teachers, interim directors do not represent a vision. They often defer leadership decisions because they, they state that they're merely temporary. This has been my, my personal experience.
Thirty seconds.
The only time I've encountered interim directors is when things weren't going well, and they needed to make decisions that might have a fiscal impact on the, on the district. I want to say that legally, an IEP team, it consists of an administrative designee, and that could be a principal, a department chair, a teacher, who's been designated as such. They can make decisions regarding programming and even additional support. So one of the big conundrums has been why someone who can make the final decision is not available, but by law, the IEP team can make the final decision.
Thank you, Ms. Lauer.
Thank you very much for your dedication.
Catherine Abarca, followed by Derek Eichenberger.
Nice to see you all again. Sorry about the informalsness. I wanted to say we'll move really fast, because we want Dr. Noel to be here. Regardless of who you hire in the interim capacity, the key will be oversight. In order to foster public trust and establish the district's intention of acting in good faith, the C Act would like to propose the formation of a board committee, i.e., an oversight committee, two members to act as direct supervision and to liaison with whatever interim mechanisms are put into place. Interim directors are only as effective as he or she are empowered to be. So sufficient authority and decision-making power must be invested in the position or positions to allow effective leadership. The parents and teachers who come to here to speak with you publicly are only a small fraction of those that we represent. Think of us as the tip of the iceberg. You never know what's under the water. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Abarca. Derek Eichenberger, followed by Sandy Shove.
Please don't reconfirm Dr. Hilton. Thank you.
Thank you. Carmen Escudel, followed by Marsha Eichenberger.
I'm a parent of a child in the school district, and we've had several, actually, many problems with your district and your staff, particularly with your directors and your coordinators. I thought that when I was coming to your administrative people, I was going to find team that I wasn't finding with my daughter's school. Unfortunately, it's been, it's been scary, because Allen Hilton has personally been very, he's been very, I'm sorry, the word I'm looking for, it's, he's just intimidated, intimidated me personally. You know, he gets red in the face. He's not looking for team. He's not looking for my child's benefit. She's been out of school for six months, well, she was out of school for a total of six months, and not once was he presentable in a way that he was looking to be positive for your district. I think he jeopardizes. I think these 24 days are crucial. Children are being affected. Again, just look for team. Just look for a team effort, because children are being affected, particularly my child. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Escudel. Marsha Eichenberger, followed by Yolanda Donato.
Good afternoon, board members and Ms. Swawski. I was not going to speak this evening, but I, I am feeling compelled to say a couple of things about Dr. Hilton. We had an IEP meeting in April for our daughter, and I just want to give a little, a few high points about that. We, first of all, my mother and my mother-in-law attended, and you are not going to find a family who is more dedicated to educating their children than we are. We are, we are there, we are, you know, we work together, we try to do what we can to help our kids. We arrived about five to 10 minutes early to the meeting. We were asked to stay outside in the antiway. We brought food. We tried to come in collaboratively. We walked into the room. No one stood to shake our hand. We were treated very disrespectfully. Dr. Hilton was very hostile to us as we entered the room, and I found that really disconcerting. You know, we, our experts that we brought in, we hired an independent psycho, neuropsychologist to do an outside independent assessment at our own expense. She was giving the report about my daughter, our daughter, and Dr. Hilton fell asleep at the table, head bobbing, disrespectful beyond belief. My mother was so appalled by this behavior that she sent a letter to the board, to the board members, copied Dr. Service on that, Ms. Swawski, I don't know if, I don't recall if you were on that, and to Dr. Hilton directly. One board member returned the call to my mother and acknowledged that. My mother is a former school board member. She is a former educator, has sat through many IEPs, and has never seen behavior like that in an IEP meeting, and was thoroughly disgusted. I guess I just want to say, I want to know why this district, via Dr. Hilton, is fighting so hard to block the services that our daughter needs in order to receive FAP. I want to know why, because I feel like we are blocked. She's entitled to that. We have given it our all. My husband told you that. And I don't want to see my daughter going into the bridge program. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Eichenberger. Yolanda Donato, followed by Lourdes Uribe.
My name is Yolanda Donato, and I have a geek with autism. And then, when I start looking for a school for my son and the district, let me tell you that I'm very disappointed in the district, because you guys have horrible, horrible programs for kids. As a matter of fact, you guys don't have programs for kids with autism. I don't know what am I going to do with my kid when he's going to start school. First of all, he doesn't have a school yet. Second of all, you guys are not prepared for autism. I don't know what you guys are thinking, but I wanted to show you an email that I want to share with you guys to tell you what I have from one of you. Mr. Najee, that is one of the new interns you guys got. He didn't help me at all, and all he told me is that he had no authority to make decisions for, for my kid. He couldn't find me, he couldn't even make an appointment for me to go and visit Monroe. That's how bad it is. So I'm sorry that I feel like this, but I can tell you, at this point, I'm ready to hire an attorney, because I think that's the only way I'm going to be heard. And I, I'm just, I'm sorry to feel that way, but that's my next step from you guys, okay? And I also think that I have to, to tell you how my son is coming. So here's, if you want to share with them.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Donato. Lourdes Uribe, followed by Carolyn Renard.
I'm here again to please ask that Dr. Hilton not to be hired for a day. He, we, we had a similar experience during our IEP meeting that was like four weeks ago. He was very disrespectful. Honestly, I thought it was because we were Latino parents. Not that it makes me feel good that Ms. Eichenberger had the same experience, but somehow, I don't know, I think that it takes a little more courage to get into your meetings, board meetings, IEP meetings, if you don't know well the language, if you don't have money to sue the district. I'm not here to say who is more committed to their families. I'm just here to tell you that I love my boys. When he is trying to drive to pass the reading test, and when he is trying to find a job, when I have health problems, and my husband has health problems, and we don't know if we're going to be here to help them, I thought by the time they were 20, they were going to be able to have a job, some sort of job. It is very hard to get some sort of employment for my 20 and 22-year-old sons. Their disability became part of their personality, because they didn't get services.
Thirty seconds.
I don't believe, I believe they would have been able to have a job in the future if they had gotten the specialist that I've been requesting for years. You never have help for kids with autism, and they become emotionally out of the system, out of the juvenile system, because they have parents that love them. With their resources that we have, we want them to get the better that they can get. Thank you very much for helping other kids and for maybe trying to help us don't hire Allen Hilton. I asked him to deal with Ms. Miller, the other special ed director, when he was very bad with us, and he didn't let me. I don't know who she is.
Thank you.
And thank you very much.
Carolyn Renard.
And this is the man that Ms. Swawski and Mr. Service think is just perfect for this I want to add that the problems that are noted in the FICMAT report, and that you've heard over and over again from parents, that this district administration has been causing, couldn't happen without being enabled by this board. It couldn't happen, you know, without being protected, these people being protected and enabled by you, the people that have been elected to protect our kids, and certainly not to be abusing them and allowing abuse to go on. You know, this is just, you know, when you guys vote, you have this, you've going to have, you know, you've got kids going to prison, you've got kids committing suicide, you've got kids coming out of high school without being able to read and write, and with mental health problems that they didn't have before. And you've got blood on your hands already. And, you know, if you go ahead and hire somebody who has this kind of a record, and whatever happens after that, it's, I don't know how you're going to be able to sleep at night.
Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
On D1, I'd like to know the board's pleasure, if you'd like to separate these and make it into two different motions, one for Carol Miller and one for Allen Hilton.
Please buy for Kate.
Is that agreeable? Yes, okay.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
I move that Allen Hilton not be rehired.
I will second it if no one else steps forward. And let me, let me, in comment, since the motion's on the floor, I'm doing it mainly because I have no idea what he's done, other than what I've heard. We have a system set up where he's been working for us as an interim director. We've heard from him once as a board, at my request, and that was a calendar that we received of, I've attended this meeting, this meeting, this. We never have, I have never had a feeling, pardon? Well, I'm, I'm just saying, as a board member, I don't know, I have.
I'm sorry. I'm just, I just want to make sure that the public is aware. We're prohibited from discussing job performance in an open session, so I just was trying to make sure we didn't veer across that path.
Yeah. I, it's our fault for, okay, I'm just going to leave it at that. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I have some questions, because it's, I feel like, I wish, like, some of the issues that are being raised might be moot, because if we approve Dr. Miller, Dr. Miller will be handling all those IEPs and all the cases. And the intention behind extending Dr. Hilton's contract was to have him resolve those or complete those cases that are essentially resolved, that don't really involve any additional negotiation or, or work with, with the parents or the students. And it was in order to allow, or at least as I understand it, it's in order to allow Ms. Dr. Miller to have the ability to focus on these other issues without having to go back and take care. back and take care of some things that could be wrapped up pretty quickly, and that should, that we are in the process of hiring a new, or at least interviewing and advertising for a new executive director, who, if we should find that person prior to the 24 days, then Dr. Hilton's contract would be for fewer than 24 days. So it seems to me that some of the issues that have been raised won't, would not be an issue because Dr. Hilton won't be involved in those cases, or in those, in IEPs or meeting with the parents, and that it might be beneficial to Mrs., to Dr. Miller to have those cases taken care of so that she would not have to take time away from the IEPs and the work that she wants to do with the parents to focus on that. So that's, my concern is that we may be, I think we would give her a better start if there was somebody there to take care of all the stuff that's essentially done.
Could I ask a couple of quick questions? We heard a comment by a teacher that interim directors have little contact with the sites or little impact on the sites. We are in the summer months right now. Would you anticipate that the tasks that we might have for Mr. Hilton would not be site-specific? I mean, what, could you delineate the kinds of tasks that we're assuming he would potentially?
Some of the, some of the tasks, and I agree, Mrs. Cordero spoke very clearly about what the tasks, I mean, that it's not the IEPs that are still in process or any kind of other cases, that's just finishing up those that are pretty much resolved. The tasks that would be site-specific, and we also, along with, today, we, along with the executive director hiring that or interviewing, that is the first week in August, we also interviewed for program specialists today and had a good, good pool of candidates, so we expect to have that, those people in place as well. The site kinds of things would be helping, we're doing an audit on the aides right now to make sure that the IEPs that call for assistance, instructional assistance, that we have those hired, that we're getting all that in place, that the staffing is in place, we have all of our, you know, the speech teachers, the psychologists, and of course all the teachers at the sites. Another person in the district office helping with that is what we're considering, you know, and he knows some of the staff. He and Dr. Miller will not know anybody, so her role, we anticipate, would be working with the parents, starting the vision process, starting, getting some of the practices and protocols in place that we're missing. She also has a very clear idea of where to start with the FICMAT report and putting things in categories and moving forward, and that, we're going to talk about that at the next board meeting, August 11th. Does that answer your question enough?
So my understanding is that Mr. Hilton is basically, or Dr. Hilton is phased out of the parent piece, and if we were to hire Mrs. Miller or Dr. Miller, that she would come in and take over that piece?
That's correct, and also I want to emphasize that Dr. Hilton agreed to come back for as many days as we needed up to 24, knowing that we're in the process of hopefully hiring someone in August, and therefore may only, it may be very short. So it's just a stopgap measure to do work in the office.
Please, please.
I don't think Mrs. Cordero cares what the parents said today.
Please, that's, we've had public comment, you know, let's keep our, let's keep our decorum, everybody heard everything that was said, everybody takes it very seriously. And let me follow up on that question. The contract is three days a week, so the 24 days is really potentially eight weeks.
It's for the month of August and September.
Yeah, so that's.
Three days a week.
Two months, yes.
Yes, two months.
But, I just wanted to say, so, but potentially, he could leave sooner, once we get new people on board.
Absolutely. He's not starting until the first week in August. Potentially the first week in August, we could hire someone.
Dr. Noel?
To me, the issue is, and I certainly am not going to engage in a personal evaluation in a public session, to me, the issue is not his performance. The issue is more closely related to the, one of the major thrusts of the FICMAT report is that efforts have to be made to restore public trust and the elimination of suspicion and to establish a new foundation of a relationship with the public. And whatever his merits or not, I don't think he can do that. Quite the contrary. I think the message that our retaining him sends to the public and to the community and to the parents is that we're doing the same thing again. Not just the same thing, but the same category of thing. After all, we've had a director that was, was also a major failure and precipitated this process, this crisis in the first place. So, to me, the issue is, you can say symbolic, the meaning of the action is more important than anything that this particular person can contribute, in my mind, and it is very negative and it would be a grave mistake.
I have a question.
Yeah?
I'm wondering, who will do those administrative tasks if we do not extend the contract for Dr. Hilton?
Well, are we agendaized to talk about that? Because I, if we are, I have a lot to say about other possibilities, but I have the feeling that we really can't talk about that.
Well, isn't that part of whether we need to keep him or not, is knowing what will happen to his job if he, if we don't have somebody there?
I've just read, been reading the Attorney General's interpretation of the Brown Act, and no, when you're talking about a personnel case, you're talking about a particular individual, not about structure, not about processes. I could be wrong, of course, and we could, we could stop right now and refer to an attorney, but I think that we're in error if we continue.
Now, I think the question, it sounds like an interesting question, is if we, if we don't hire somebody, what happens? And that, to me, is part of the, part of the, part of the conclusion.
If that's part of the discussion, Mr. Herron, then I have a question. Why are we in a position?
Excuse me, can I, I did have the floor, so could I get the, the response to my question first?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, so if we don't?
In very simple terms.
Yeah. Not the discussion of the structure of special ed, but just, given what we have in place right now, if he is, if he leaves at the end of his current contract?
And he's gone, right?
And he's gone at this point, yeah. So, who, how will those, or who will do those tasks?
I won't know exactly that. You always restructure when you're, have fewer people.
Okay.
You have a, yeah.
In other words, he's not, he's not here, so somebody will do the work. Dr. Noel?
Mr. Herron, then, in pursuing Mrs. Cordero's comment, I think it is unconscionable that this board is put in, put in a position where we are presented with two candidates to decide up or down. We are not allowed and have not had the ability, because the agenda has been restrained, to talk about other possibilities, and to ask and answer the question, what would we do if we did not hire one or both of these candidates? That could have been agendaized, but it was not, and I asked the question, why wasn't it? And, and at this, and at this moment, the superintendent is on vacation. I find that unconscionable.
Thank you, Dr. Noel. We have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. The motion was, okay. All oppose?
No.
Two to two, the motion does not pass.
I'd like to move to Dr. Miller and move that we approve Dr. Miller as an interim special education administrator.
I'll second that.
I have an amendment I'd like to propose, Mr. Herron.
Yes.
I'd like the motion to be amended to include the following, and that the board instructs the superintendent to constitute an oversight committee of two board members with reference to the position of interim superintendent, pardon me, of interim, what's it called now? It was called interim director, and then it got changed to interim?
Administrator.
Administrator. Okay, that. My motion is supposed to read that.
Is there a second?
Do we have a second first?
For an amendment to, yeah. It dies for lack of a second. Is there any other suggestion or amendment? If not, I would like to either include an amendment or include an understanding, which might be the basic same thing. I want a system set up where six months from now, we know what Dr. Miller has done during the six months. So whether I can just every two weeks ask for it to be on the agenda the following week, or whether I can attach amendment to this motion that says, in fact, we will have a report to the board every two weeks for the next six months as a, an item on, an update by the interim administrative person.
I'll accept that amendment. I made the motion, I answered.
But I'm just, and I don't mind the gist of that amendment, but I'm just wondering, that would mean at every board meeting, we would have an update, and I'm just wondering, given?
My intent is on the conference agenda, on the action item, or if necessary, in closed session, that every meeting, we hear what's going on.
Could it be in the form of a, of the board brief? I'm just concerned that we often have such packed agendas, but would a board brief?
No.
No, okay, so it has to be on the agenda?
That's, I'm just saying, no.
Okay.
Was that a motion, Mr. Herron?
If it's, if that's an appropriate motion, I guess I'm in charge.
It's an appropriate amendment, I accept.
Okay, I make that amendment.
Okay.
And, any discussion?
Yes. Can you clarify the amendment again? You said it could be on any of the agenda?
The amendment, in the, in the process by the board president and the superintendent in scheduling, that it can either be a conference item agenda, it can be an action item agenda, and/or can be on closed session, but the intent is every two weeks, we know and find out and be aware of what is happening in special education.
And it would not be on the consent agenda?
Not on the, no, not on the consent agenda.
That's what I second.
Okay.
As an amendment to the main motion.
All those in favor of the amendment say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Amendment's carried. Any further discussion on the main motion?
Having, with that amendment, I can support the main motion.
All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. Okay, did anybody have a motion going back to Dr. Hilton? Was there any other motion to go on the floor?
I move to adjourn.
We have other items on the agenda, we can't adjourn.
You have to vote on a motion to adjourn, nonetheless.
There was, is there a second to that motion?
Okay, all right.
Dies for lack of a second, because there are other items in relationship to what we just did that need to be addressed. Is there any other motion regarding Dr. Hilton? Okay, let's move to item D2, which is, again, regarding Doc, pardon, there was a speaker on D2, I believe, but if we didn't pass the motion in D1, do we need, do we need D2?
I don't think you can do it.
No, okay. So, we will pull D2. We have D3, approval of state teacher's retirement system earnings exemption for Dr. Carol Miller to serve as interim administrator of special education.
I move to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Any, is there any public comment?
I didn't see.
I think, there was one in here that had several, wasn't there one?
The mine.
Yeah, D, I, yeah, D1 and D2, Carolyn Renard.
Okay.
So now, yeah, okay. All in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Carried. We have a couple announcements here. Announcement, because our parking lot is rented tomorrow, the Santa Barbara Street exit will be blocked. Please ask everyone to be careful when they exit via De La Guerra Street at the moment. And I would like to make one announcement, that we did not change the name of Santa Barbara High School, okay?
Did we? Did we have a lockback? One year ago?
We.